Good evening. Red Bank's zoning board of adjustment will come to order the seventeenth day of October. Time is six thirty. Roll call, please.
Anne Thorey?
Here.
Raymond Mas?
Here.
Eileen Hogan?
Here.
Ben Euro?
Here.
Sharon Lee?
Here.
Vincent Light?
Here.
Paul Cagnio?
Here.
Anna Cruz?
Here.
Amanda Duramis?
Not here.
Eugene Horowitz?
Here.
Chris Havens?
Here.
Adequate notice in this meeting has been posted for a hall. I'll let the borough clerk and mail to the Esprit Part Press, the Tuber Times, and the Star Letter. This meeting is being taped recorded, and the event the app can use the service of the court reported to transcribe the tapes. Board requires a copy of the transcript. We'll break it about eight P M. for deliberation testimony heard this far. The conference room on the first floor. Public is invited to attend, however, discussion between board members and the public is not permitted at that time. No new cases will be heard after nine P M. Red Bank zoning board of adjustment has maintained a policy cutoff hour nine thirty P M. for its hearings. Any applicants not heard this evening will be carried over to the next scheduled meeting. Uh, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, individual liberty, and justice for all. Okay, we have administrative matters to deal with, uh, meeting minutes from October third. Proof? I'll approve that.
A second.
Yes, right?
Yes.
Raymond Mas?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Euro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
Paul Cagnio?
Yes.
And Anna Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, we we have a resolution of approval for one Fisher place.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. That was an approval from last month's meeting, uh, authorizing the construction of a detached garage. And it was actually a use variance because of the size of the garage. The application was approved and the conditions included, uh, a D restriction that the garage not be utilized as living space. The elimination of that half bathroom, um, confirmation that there'd be no further expansion or intensification, absent further approval of the board, and confirmation about the, um, the lot coverage. Uh, we want to make sure no lot coverage variance was granted, so they need to submit proof that that lot coverage is in fact calculated correctly. And our other standard, uh, conditions also including that confirmation that the driveway setback complies. If that's acceptable, uh, we can adopt that if that's the pleasure of the board.
Everybody like to make a motion to approve a resolution?
I'll approve it.
Second?
I'll second.
Raymond Mas?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Euro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
Paul Cagnio?
Yes.
Anna Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, we have a administrative grant of a design waiver for one twenty-one Monmouth Street. Uh, Mr. McKenna?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you recall, at one twenty-one Monmouth, there was an issue about parking in the front yard. We came up several options submitted to the board. And it's my understanding that at this point, uh, a request for a simple waiver as far as allowing the parking in the front yard would be acceptable to the board. And, uh, I'd like to ask the board to grant that waiver.
And again, I think the request is, uh, that would be in lieu of the canopy. And, uh, basically the request is to do it administratively. And, uh, Mr. McKenna and I have talked about that and if and the board has talked about it. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if that's the pleasure of the board, you can, um, have, uh, an approval, uh, granting that design waiver.
Okay, somebody like to make a motion to approve that?
I'll move that.
Second?
A second.
Anne Thorey?
Yes.
Raymond Mas?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Euro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
And Paul Cagnio?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just, in in lieu of doing a resolution, Shawna, you can just presumably do a a letter memo to the file and we'll just have it in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next up very much. Next up, we have one sixty Newman Springs Road.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant's team comes forward, we have a couple of things to do, uh, procedurally. First up, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the, uh, Jersey Central Power and Light Company notice they received? I don't see any. Uh, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So it would be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to to proceed tonight. And what we'll do is we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. So we're going to mark as, let's see. Uh, A one is the Red Bank Plan, uh, zoning board application package. A two is the project narrative. And let's see. Uh, A three is the preliminary and final site plans prepared by Boswell Engineering. It's dated July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, last revised September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of eleven sheets. A four is the, uh, boundary and topographic survey prepared by Langen Engineering. And that's dated April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. A five is the zoning denial letter dated June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. And A six is the disclosure of ownership form. A seven is the supplemental submission, uh, prepared by, uh, Ben Nadell, the applicant's attorney. And that's dated October second, two thousand twenty-four. And A eight, we're going to mark as the T and M Associates Review Memorandum dated October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, if we miss anything, we can get that momentarily. And what I'd like to do is, uh, swear in Jacqueline Dermon, our board engineer, and Shawna B. Banks, our, um, Director of Community Development. Ladies, if you could just both raise your right hands. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
Thank you.
All right, let the record reflect that both of our friends have been, uh, sworn. And, uh, so we will turn the application over to, uh, Ben Nadell. He's the applicant's attorney. Good evening.
Evening, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Ben, Mr. Nadell, you need to speak into the microphone really close.
You need to bring it really close to you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kennedy, may I please, uh, just, uh, some photographs?
Sure.
It's, uh, JCPNL's photograph package.
So we'll mark that photograph package as A nine. And do you know roughly how many photos are in there?
Yes, I.
Okay. And were they taken by your, uh, engineer in your office or?
Uh, they were taken by First Energy's staff.
Okay. And relatively recently? So they're accurate depictions of what exists. Well, mark this as A nine. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. My name is Benjamin Nadell, and I'm currently as a law firm. Sorry. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant, JCPNL. The application this evening is for preliminary and final major site plan approval and D for condition. The property is located in Lot ninety-seven, Lot thirty-one. It's presently improved within existing electrical substation, commonly referred to as the Red Bank Substation. The purpose of the next application is to seek approval for an expansion of the existing substation, along with certain new improvements to both the substation and to the property. Property is located in the borough's light industrial L I zoning district, where public utilities are permitted as a conditional use, subject to ordinance four ninety one fifty D and ordinance four ninety one twenty-one. Proposed improvements to the substation include the installation of a new control enclosure, a laminate pole, underground permission work, chain link security fencing, a small transformer replacement, and a new sliding access gate. The L I zoning district permits public utilities as a conditional use. Actually, here this evening, there are some conditions in the borough's ordinance that are not fully satisfied, mostly due to the existing conditions at its site. For that reason, the applicant is seeking a conditional use variance from the port this evening, along with its site plan approval. We have three witnesses. First, for that testimony, it's, uh, JCPNL Substation Engineer. Second, Jeff Morris from Boswell Engineering, the project site plan engineer. And finally, Christine Carphone, our professional planner, who will testify to the arrangements we are seeking this evening. So with that, unless there are any questions, I'll go ahead and call our first witness, Mr. Foo.
All right, good evening. And if you could just, uh, state your name, please. Uh, Agung Foo. And how do you spell the first name?
A G U N G.
A G U N G. And last name?
F U.
F U. Okay. Um, and if you could just raise your right hand. Good evening and welcome to the Red Bank Zoning Board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
And just for the record, your business address?
Uh, two hun- two hundred Pottsville Pike, writing Pennsylvania.
And you can put your right hand down. We don't need the hand. You'll get, you'll get tired.
And and please sit down and speak, speak right into the mic so we can hear you.
It's twenty-eight hundred Pottsville Pike, writing B A one nine six zero five.
And you are testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed engineer?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Mr. Nadell will will get his credentials on the record.
Sure. Agung, can you please give the board, uh, a quick background of your educational history and work history?
My name is Agung Foo, and I'm a professional engineer licensed in Pennsylvania. And I provided oversight for the substation design on this project.
We have to be licensed in Jersey? They want to answer.
Okay. Uh, I graduated from Rexel University in two thousand and six with a bachelor of science degree in electrical engineering. Uh, I've been employed with First Energy since two thousand nineteen, April, two thousand nineteen. And my first position was as protection engineer for a bit over two years. And then I moved to substation design for almost three years. Prior to my employment with First Energy, I worked as consulting engineer for Worthy Parsons and working in various projects, uh, as a consulting engineer, uh, in power network and power generation projects, uh, at the various states such as Pennsylvania, New York, Tennessee, South Carolina, Indiana, California.
Great, thank you. Looks up. Thank you. Mr. Foo, are you licensed in New Jersey as well?
I'm not at the moment.
Is that an issue?
Is?
The, uh, we do have, uh, Mr. Morris here from Boswell Engineering. He was a New Jersey licensed civil engineer who prepared the site plan. Uh, First Energy has engineers all over the country who, uh, design and create the substation. So Mr. Foo, for all of United Institute, you can give an overview of the substation. We have Mr. Boswell who created the site plan for tonight's hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I had the pleasure of serving as, uh, alternate counsel for the planning board in a meeting last month. And what the, uh, planning board chairman said is that you have to act like a rock star tonight in terms of these microphones, that you have to be speaking right into it. So otherwise, uh, it's not going to be heard, it's not going to be picked up. So that's, uh, we got to be a rock star.
Correct.
Note that, you're right. Can you please provide the board with an overview of the property and a well of overview of the existing substation?
Uh, I'd like to show you the, uh.
Sure, and we'll mark that into the record, A ten. And that's just, uh, I'm assuming that's an aerial photograph?
Correct.
You?
Uh, the subject property in, this is the existing Red Bank Substation. In this screen area, uh, it's owned by about two point eight acre Marshall, all of it is C P N L. And there are three various foliage level in the substation, which is transmission line at two hundred thirty K V, uh, subtransmission at thirty-four point five K V, and distribution four thousand volt service located on this property. And and this substation hold various equipment required to safely operate and protect the electrical system. This existing, the this, the existing substation, its fence from here, sorry. Yeah, it's it's from here all the way here, all the way up to the Mohawk Lane, and then parallel to the train station, to the train track. So.
Thank you. Uh, can you please provide with a general overview of the project? For example, what exactly is JCPNL proposing to add to the substation?
Okay, uh, let me see, yeah. Do you consider, thank you. But this is what, um, the overview of the project is, um, so all we proposing to add thirty-four point five K V lines. It's coming from Atlantic Substation in Colnecks, and also thirty-four point five K V lines that coming from Bellwood Substation in Middletown. So this is where the location of the underground. And a new control enclosure is also is needed since the existing controlling closer has reached its maximum capacity to accommodate a new relay panels, the two new, the two new thirty-four point five K V lines. And this control enclosure is sit on your foundations and access to the building will be through, uh, adequate metal staircase. Uh, along, along with the new control enclosure, we'll also install a few fences. The new fan, uh, the existing fence located on the, uh, west side and east side, this will be removed and replaced with a new fence. The existing fence that is currently, uh, on the south side here will be moved and expanded near the, uh, the southern side of the property line of JCPNL. So also, the new two breaker, circuit breakers will be installed uh, over here and right there. This is the one that connected to thirty-four point five K V line to Bellwood Substation. And this is the one breaker that connected to, uh, Atlantic Substation.
And thank you, Mr. Foo. Uh, and why are these improvements being made to the substation? What is the purpose of these improvements?
Well, the first of all, uh, to improve safe and reliable service to current customer as well as to the new customer. JCPNL proposes to add additional thirty-four point five K V lines from Red Bank Substation to JCPNL Atlantic Substation and Bellwood Substation. The Atlantic Substation is located at Colnecks and, uh, the Bellwood Substation is in the Middletown. Uh, the new thirty-four point five K V lines will require additional two relay panels to be installed. And the current controlling closure has reached its maximum capacity and no longer has space to install this new, this, these new relay panels. This is where the existing, uh, control enclosure. As a result, JCPNL proposes to install the new enclosure, which right here, which will have sufficient space to house these new relay panels. So basically, JCPNL proposing is known different that if we, if you have a house, you know, with additional appliances and you need a power, more power to your home. So you, it's the same process like what we have right now. When you get a permit and, you know, you will hire an electrician to run a new additional coming power and new panel to your house. And, you know, also if you want to upgrade, uh, your appliances that you have for fifty years, for example, and, you know, in addition to keeping up with the new technology, you would have more reliable source and even, and even safer appliances or equipment serve your needs.
Thank you. And just the specific type of benefits that will be provided after the improvements are installed?
Additional circuits and new relay panels. Uh, this will increase the reliability and reduce outages amongst JCPNL customers. And the new relays are faster, accurate, and more reliable than old relays currently installed at the Red Bank Substation.
Do you know the approximate number of customers served by the Red Bank Substation?
It's approximately four thousand customer, which include residential, uh, this is commercial and industrial.
Does it only serve Red Bank residents or does it serve residents outside of Red Bank?
It serves both Red Bank, uh, Red Bank customers, residents, and also outside of Red Bank's residents, such as Colnecks, Tintum Falls, Eaton Town, Middletown, Trusbury.
Thank you. So just switching gears, um, I want to talk about some of the, uh, engineering aspects. Can you give the board an overview about any type of traffic impacts that might result from the installation of these improvements?
Um, the Red Bank Substation has two entrances. Uh, one is on the Newman Springs Road, which is during the normal operation. And the other one is on the Mohawk Lane entrance. So the Mohawk Lane is hardly used, you know, unless there is a project or improvement on the Mohawk Lane, on the substation on the Mohawk Lane. And the crew members, uh, one or two a month during the normal operation or non-construction will be seen entering and leaving the substation on various days. And they typically drive work trucks or work vans. Uh, in addition to the crew, there also, there will be some occasional delivery trucks and other vehicles to support the various construction activities. These may include dump trucks and flatbed vehicles falling in some required equipment. At the completion of, of the project, there will be no more utility traffic entering or leaving the substation than what you've pres- previously seen.
Any trash or recycling pickup for the substation?
Uh, during the construction, contractor will order, uh, a dumpster and will clean up the construction site, uh, for any sort of removal, trash, and recycling. The dumpster will be picked up by the waste company once it gets filled up. Once construction is completed and substation is in normal operation, there will be no trash and reci- recycling pickup. The substation is considered unmanned location.
Thank you. And how about loading and deliverables to the site?
Uh, the new control enclosure manufacturer, uh, will utilize approximately a hundred feet long truck like that to deliver a controlling closure to the Red Bank Substation. And the entrance will be through the Newman Springs Road. And this will be the largest truck.
Thank you. And, uh, any grading or drainage issues with the improvement or expansion?
Um, there will be no increase in upper use services because the controlling closer is elevated and the existing expansion area is, you know, and we're not changing grading, elevation, and service area.
Thank you. And, uh, my final question for Mr. Foo, uh, just timeline for construction, uh, for JCPNL?
Uh, that will be approximately August two thousand twenty-five to November two thousand twenty.
I'm sorry, that was what?
August two thousand twenty-five.
For it to be completed?
Until approximately November two thousand twenty-five.
So that'll conclude our direct testimony for Mr. Foo.
Um, are there any safety concerns with adding all this? I know that substations had fires from time to time and some other issues. Are any additional adding this to?
Uh, the only additional, uh, in this project is we installing the new relay panels, which is, uh, in terms of technology, you know, it has more advanced technology than what the, uh, uh, existing relay we have right now. It will be able to communicate directly to the control room. So if there should be any, any, any fault on the line, this relay will be able to drill faster, accurate than the existing relays.
Any questions from the board? Yeah, I have a question about capacity. You mentioned it serves four thousand customers currently, is that right?
Approximately.
Okay. With the increased capacity, how much, how many customers would it serve and for how long would that suffice? Is this like the, the increased capacity would be good for two years, five years, ten years? We don't know.
This will be in the long term, Mr. Foo, because, you know, we adding a new line. And this is also not just only to serve for the existing customer, but also for the future customers. So we provide it, uh, you know, sorry, not just only replacing the, uh, but also we adding capacity for the future customer.
Do you have a sense of how many customers the capacity, increased capacity would result in?
I don't have that data at the moment, sir.
And if if it were not approved, you're at capacity, what happens with new customers? Are they served out of a different substation or what what would happen?
Uh, our power, uh, electrical grid is interconnected with the other substation. So, you know, between, between the Red Bank and, for example, that Atlantic and, and the, uh, Bellwood, there will be sufficient, enough power to provide whatever the customer needs.
Thank you.
You know, I just have a couple of questions too. Vince, you want to go?
Go ahead.
Yeah, my good friend.
Is there a, um, is there any, um, change in the noise coming from that area now with the new equipment?
I don't believe there is any, any changes, sir, because, uh, we, we're not adding, we're not adding a new equipment other than the power line that coming. And then we upgrade, uh, a, a couple of the, the new, uh, to the new equipment, which has better safety and the noise, uh, improvement.
Okay.
Than to the old.
So the new transformer will be quieter than the old transformer?
Yeah, this, this is not a big transformer. It's, I would call, you know, it's a baby transformer, which is replacing the existing, uh, transformer.
Okay. And then also, um, is there an environmental impact, um, to that area? It's Mohawk Pond is adjacent to the property. So what, if anything, is, uh, would impact the pond and the life at, uh?
What if anything is, uh, would impact the pond and the life, uh, you know, the ecosystem of the pond?
Yeah, there's no impact on the, uh, on the alone.
Yeah. And how do we know that? Was there a study done or something or is there a, is that just?
Uh, it's, uh. You know, the underground installation, you know, which is the new cable. And then replacing the transformer. Uh, there's nothing associated with, uh. We can building the Mohawk pond. Because everything is, you know, the transformer, the small transformer, everything is in one place.
Okay. So zero effect on Mohawk?
Zero effect, sir.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Uh, you're upgrading the fencing. So visually, will it be changed? Gauge wise, will it be changed? Length and height wise, will it be changed? Uh, for what the neighbors see, from what the community is exposed to?
Uh, for our standard, we have a seven feet high of the fence link. That will be located here. And then we have, uh, one wood of the barbed wire is for the security purpose. And also we installing sliding gate. It's also a chain link.
Okay, what, what exists there now?
Uh, it's, it's also a chain link fence.
Chain link.
It's, it's.
The barbed wire.
You're ready.
Uh, yeah, is it? Like razor wire or, I mean, how aggressive is the wire gonna be on top of the fence?
Uh, it's, it's the barbed wire just to prevent people from jumping from the substation. It's just for the security.
But physically, is it gonna be a, is the fencing, the chain link going to be a heavier gauge than the existing one?
Uh. I don't believe there is any change on the, uh, it's, it's nine gauge. From what I understand for our standard. So there is, I don't, I don't believe there is any changes in terms of the size of the gauge.
And the fencing are going to be gates that can slide by.
Correct, correct. Uh, no, it's just only one gate that it will.
That's the Newman Spring side, side, on the Newman Spring side.
On the Newman Spring Road side, correct.
Thank you.
Vince, I have a question. Uh, you mentioned that the project, one of the benefits will increase reliability. Would you go as far as to say? Or to characterize these changes as being able to decrease the potential for power outages? In the Red Bank area?
Oh, absolutely. That is correct because, because of the, uh. Uh, the modern, more advanced of technology, uh, relay and also. Uh, we have a couple of project that is, that is outside of Red Bank. That we're installing, uh. New substation, basically like on the EH corner. And then we increase the, uh, the capacity of the substation. Such that we will be able to serve more capacity of the power to the customer.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any additional questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one? I, I read in, and I don't know if this question is for you. Or your ex, uh, one of your next witnesses, but you referenced, uh, a laminate pole. Can you just, just so that the board is clear, where that pole is gonna be and you talk about the height of it?
Uh, this is will be the riser form, the riser form. That is coming from the thirty-four point five KV line. And from outside here. And then from here, then it will drop. Uh, through the underground installation.
And what's the height of it?
I don't, I don't.
I read, and if that's, I read, I just, um, Mr. Nadell, I read that it has a. In, in one of the stations or one of the documents has a height of fifty feet. Does that sound right?
Sir, I, I believe that that's gonna be the same high as the existing. Uh, transmission, um, hole, which is somewhere located here.
And, and we can, we can look at site plans and before the end of the evening, figure that out.
Great. And then just in terms of, uh, is there any change to the lighting situation?
Uh, the only lighting that I believe is. Is from the control enclosure. This is that light fixture will be installed, uh, on top of the, uh, uh. The entrance, the door entrance, the control, to the new control enclosure.
So no material change to the lighting scheme? And then just for the record, just that we have it, uh, I think Mr., the chairman asked you about, um. Health and, and things like that. Is there anything with the new technology that there's any? Uh, test results that show health issues or adverse health concerns that we have to worry about?
Uh, so far I don't see or I don't hear anything related to health issue with the new relay panels. Because we're no longer using the asbestos with the relay panel.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public for this witness? Okay, closed public portion.
Next witness.
Move on to your next witness.
Great. So we will call, uh, Jeff Morris from Boswell Engineering.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Morris. If you could just state your name and business address, please?
Sure. So Jeffrey Morris, Boswell Engineering, three, three, O, Phillips Avenue, South Arkansas.
Good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed?
Uh, tonight will be an engineer, possibly surveyor, but mostly engineer.
Thank you.
While Mr. Morris is telling you about his educational background and work history, I'm gonna pass out and exhibit a tie. Should've.
What do we have? Two?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Oh, A eleven. And what is A eleven?
Uh, A eleven is. Going to be, uh, the Red Bank Substation Landscape Design Plan. Okay, uh, I would be a civil engineer from Lehigh University. I've been, uh, employed by Boswell Engineering for forty-five years. Twenty of which I've been the head of the site civil department. I'm licensed as a professional engineer, professional landscaper, and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have testified in front of over two hundred boards throughout. Who be, uh, several in Monmouth County, Al, Oceanport, Allenhurst, and, uh. Interly.
Great, thank you. Review the application. And you're familiar with the property, the zoning ordinance, uh, you've been involved with, uh, the preparation of tonight's.
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and you reviewed the, uh, review letter that we received from the POC, the N M data is October fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Yes, I have.
Um, and in this letter, um, there was a comment about. A possible landscaping, uh, for the substation.
That is correct. Uh, and.
Do we need to mark that? It's already been marked.
Did we just, uh, mark it as I was passing them out?
Okay, okay, we marked.
Landscape plan.
Got it.
Mr. Morris, can you provide the board an overview of, uh, landscaping plan that was prepared for tonight's hearing?
Sure. This is the, uh, easterly portion of the, uh. The lot, uh, it's basically the only portion of the lot that doesn't have substation on it. It's, uh, between on the corner of Mohawk and Pearl. Uh, includes primarily a grass surface with many of the feeder, uh, thirty-four, five K and distribution lines coming out of it. Go across.
And. Mr. Morris, uh, can you please provide the board with an overview of, um. The proposed landscaping, uh, not just the location, but also. The reasons for why the location for landscaping was chosen. I understand that there's, uh. Some unique circumstances that involve substations when it comes to installing certain improvements.
Yes, um, one of the problems is when you're coming into a substation with the overhead lines. They, they drop as they enter the substation, they get lower. So the lines across this area are all very low. Uh, so we found the key places, we were asked by the, uh, I T N M and by the player to, uh, landscape some portion of the lot. We found that the corner of Pearl and Mohawk was ideal for some very, very low landscaping. Uh. And that's right through here. And it's primarily what we're going to be planting fairly tightly is, uh, Azaleas right on the corner. And Virginia's we aspire, uh, framing them on the other side. We would have liked to run the down further, but that is a truck, that is an entrance that trucks have to access for the service. The lines are entering the substation.
And, uh, another comment in the review letter, um, about landscaping behind the park benches. During our investigation, we discovered that there's actually green acres protected lands behind the park benches.
Yes, uh, the yellow line is our property line. Uh, we can't provide anything under this, uh, power line that's coming through here. But actually, we've been coordinating with the borough, on borough property. And, and green acres and, uh, so we would have to get the permission from Green Acres to add some landscaping behind the park bench on the borough property.
And during your preparation of the landscaping plan, um, were you, um. Tending meetings and discussions with First Energy, First Energy and JCP and L engineers and staff. To try and accommodate as much landscaping on the site as possible. While also balancing all of the security related issues and safety issues that come about when it's. Time to put improvements on this area of the substation?
Yes, we did. It's always, it's always a challenge, uh, to, to get through the safety issues. With landscaping, cause unfortunately with substations, landscaping and substations don't mix very well. So that's we, we. We're always on a push and pull with them, trying to get as much landscaping as we possibly can on one of these lots.
But we had initially submitted the application, um, there was no landscaping proposed. Um, but after your meetings with First Energy's engineers and staff, you were able to determine that this landscaping. Provides safe and adequate access to the site in case, God forbid, there was ever an emergency in this area.
Yeah, safe, adequate access and it's, it's low enough that it doesn't require maintenance and trimming. Uh, continual maintenance and trimming and it provides access to the power lines that are entering and exiting the site.
Thank you. That'll conclude our direct testimony for Mr. Morris.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I have a question. Not necessarily for him, but I noticed on the exhibit you just gave us. On the right-hand side, there's a diagram that actually shows. I guess the power line that's gonna go from Belford through Red Bank down to the Atlantic substation part of Pearl. Um, and the question is, is this an existing line or is this a new line that's being run? It might be a question for the previous.
Uh, that, that, that is a new line.
So this is a completely new line that's.
This is, this is the, as, as Mr. Fu said, this is the aid in the redundancy and the reliance of the system.
Okay, so it is a new line being run from Belford all the way through Red Bank to Earth. Okay, thank you. That's clear.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Any questions?
Like, how tall is that landscaping initially? I'm just trying to.
It, it comes.
Might not be effective. I'm sorry, just.
It comes, it comes in, in three gallon buckets, so it's basically two feet high. It will grow, azaleas will grow wherever, however much you let them grow. But it's, it's, it's two to three foot high. It's, it's, it's A, not to interfere with any site distances and B, it has to stay above those type of landscape.
So can I just make a comment to the board? I know we made that suggestion, um, and you could decide obviously if you want. Uh, do you accept the, the plan or not? Personally, I don't think it'll make, it'll hide anything or buffer anything, um, from the substation. The substation is large and. And the plantings are low, um, so it might. There might be no fix for that, you know? Our intent was to put it closer to the substation, but he explained that. Can't because of the power lines. Um, when you look at the site, it's basically the, the, the area that he's showing is. A, a grassy area with, with utility poles and. I don't, my personal opinion, I don't know if a couple of bushes are really gonna hide this big power station, so. It's up to you if you think it, it's warranted or not. We just made a suggestion.
I, I think something's better than nothing, so, yeah. You know?
Yeah, I was there tonight and definitely would look better with something and they'll grow.
Oh, believe it or not, it does draw your eye away from the substation a little bit. I, I mean, this, this thing is big. I can't hide it.
Yeah, that corner's. Corn, so.
And, and the proximity to the parking lot for the park.
Yeah.
You know, you'll see all this from the parking. Sorry, you'll see all this from the parking lot to the Camp AC Park.
JCP L didn't wanna show up tonight with, you know, an answer that says we can't do anything. It took a lot of time and effort for us to have. The engineers who involve safety aspects to come up with something we can do and we felt that it was, um. An appropriate plan given the circumstances.
From the yard, really.
Okay, any more questions for this witness from the board? Any questions from the public for this witness? Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. We'll, we'll go ahead and call our final witness, Christine Cofone.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Cofone. If you could just state your name and business address?
Certainly. Uh, good evening. It's Christine Cofone, C O F O N E. Business address soon to be, we closed in August, fifty-two Red Place in Red Bank, New Jersey. And we are moving there in the process of moving our offices and should be, sign should go up hopefully next week.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Do you swear that the information you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you God?
Yes.
And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed professional planner?
Correct. I've been testifying as such for twenty-eight years in the state of New Jersey. I've been qualified before over four hundred and fifty planning and zoning boards and here in the borough on many, many occasions.
You're fine.
Please come follow me in front of us.
Lot of times, Karen, a lot of them. It's nice to be here this evening. Um, this is, uh, obviously it's an existing developed property in the industrial zone. Where public utilities are conditionally permitted. Because we violate one, if not two, of the conditional use standards. We are here seeking a variance for unmet conditional use standards. So unlike some other D variances where you hear a particular suitability and positive criteria. On the D three variance for unmet conditional use standards, our burden is to reconcile that absent compliance with those standards. This still remains an appropriate location for this use. So I will tell you that we violate section four ninety-one twenty-one E. Which regulates only one principal building being allowed on the property. We have, there's one existing, it's about seven hundred square feet. And the one that was proposed and showed to you earlier, um, by both Mr. Fu and, um, our, our landscape architect. Indicates that we are building a second building that's about sixteen hundred square feet. The site is over two acres, so I can certainly support the emotional building. Also, that existing, that building is going over an existing, um, stolen area. So we're not adding any impervious coverage. This is something that, um, obviously when you're adding a sixteen hundred square building, square foot building, you say. Okay, how are you not adding impervious coverage? And that is because, as again was explained by the engineer, the building is somewhat elevated and it's going on a stone area. Um, the other conditional use standard, um, that we have asked for for me from is. One, four ninety-one twenty-one D, which talks about sufficient landscaping, including shr- uh, shrubs, trees, and lawn area being provided. So. We attempted to comply in the sensitive ordinance. I don't disagree with your engineer that it's not, we're certainly not going to. Block out the view, right? And as planners, we know that that's not really the intent of screening anyway. You're not gonna obliterate the build. The building or the view, even if we had a building in this location, the I-zone allows a height of fifty feet for a building. So the purpose of landscaping is to soften and filter a view. So while you're certainly not gonna be able to screen the existing conditions on the subject property or the proposed condition. Completely from view, the landscaping that we're proposing, at least, um, I agree with the chair, it's better than nothing. Right? It creates some color and some interest on that corner. So we're attempting to meet those, that section of the ordinance. Um, this isn't inherently beneficial use. Public utilities certainly promote the general welfare. So. Also, when you look at the Red Bank master plan, which was just examined in two thousand twenty-three. So also, when you look at the Red Bank Master Plan, which was just examined in two thousand twenty-three, there are many goals and objectives in that that are advanced by this application. Specifically on page fifteen, it talks about Red Bank being prepared. Reading from the master plan, it states, Red Bank is fortunate to have been spared from the worst impacts of recent natural disasters such as Hurricane Sandy, and its geography makes it less vulnerable to CLO rise in many of its neighbors. It goes on to talk about as Red, as a large built-out community, Red Bank was also planned for the efficient and effective use of its most limited resource lands into the provision of high-quality public facilities and services. So certainly having our utilities and minimizing impact on the outages is important. That master plan goes on on page sixty-seven. Resiliency, Red Bank seeks to maintain and enhance community resilience in terms of its ability to withstand, adapt and quickly recover from natural disasters and other emergency events. And then there's a section on utilities on page sixty-nine that reads, the electric utility that serves Red Bank is Jersey Central Power and Light. While telephone landlines, cables, cable and other customary services are also available in the Borough. Resiliency considerations for this infrastructure includes that electric service lines and other services such as telephone and cable are vulnerable to tree fall during hurricanes. And it goes on to talk about being able to provide resiliency. So some of the testimony that you heard earlier text was that this will improve the safe and reliable deficient uh delivery of the service to this community and to the community that surrounds it. So statutorily, I think we certainly beat our burden of proof. I see no reason or no substantial detriment to the public good or the negative criteria. Rather, I think that this is an opportunity to upgrade an existing station and to implement some of those goals from the two thousand twenty-three master plan that talks specifically about providing public utility infrastructure and um resilient resilient public facilities in the community. So I mean, I think we beat our statutory burden of proof and I think we certainly meet the intent of the ordinance. Nothing further on to act.
Any questions for Ms. Cofone? Any questions from the public for this witness? Okay, close that public portion? Mr. Nadal, any additional witnesses or?
I'll conclude our direct testimony, thank you.
Any comments by the board?
You know, Mr. Chairman, can I just, I'm sorry, uh so Shauna and uh, I'm sorry, Shauna and Jackie uh and I had um extensive conversations uh with Mr. Nadal up to and Ms. Cofone up to late this afternoon, up till about five o'clock. So there's just one um issue we have to point out, could you, could you raise that or discuss the board with the issue and how we can attempt to address it?
Sure. So, uh, in T and M's review letter uh from October fifteenth, uh, which was two days ago, it was a moment of uncertainty that we initially had thought was an error, um, that on Mohawk Avenue. Um, I don't have your full record, but let me, you know, want to show you a picture here. There's a discrepancy on Mohawk Avenue um of a ten-foot, I'm gonna call it a right-of-way for now. Uh, right now, um JCP and L was under the impression it was on their property. Uh, it appears that uh this ten-foot area might actually be part of Mohawk Avenue, part of the public street. Um, so it's about ten feet. With only two days to try and investigate this before tonight's hearing, we were not able to find the correct answer. Uh, so based on my conversations with the Borough, Mr. Kennedy, um, JCP and L has agreed as a condition of tonight's approval to further investigate this with the Borough as a condition of the approval, so that the Borough can review its records, JCP and L can review its records. Um, and we've agreed to have a condition tonight where uh the Borough will have to sign off in some way, whether the Borough says to JCP and L, we'd like you to dedicate that ten feet to the Borough so that we have Mohawk land, that ten-foot area that is now officially owned uh by the Borough. The Borough might come back and say, you know what, we decided we don't want it, forget it, um, just leave it as is. We're really seeing it more, it's like a cleanup, maybe fifty years ago, this was supposed to happen and it didn't. And it's getting picked up now because a new survey has been done for this property. So that was um really the best way we felt to try and address it because it's uh, it's not so much, I don't want to say it's no any more issue, but it really involves the Borough and Borough Council if they're going to uh accept property from from a private party.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I just add a, a couple of things, and again, it's all very new and very hot off the presses. And, and in all our conversations uh that we had uh today, we uh was very clear to say, obviously, I cannot speak to the board, you know, it's got to be left up to the board. But basically, uh, Jackie, as I understand it, so the issue was raised on the, on the survey that was submitted there showed that land may have been uh just a roughly a ten-foot area dedicated to the Borough, but it wasn't necessarily shown on our tax maps. So there was a question as to whether, whether or not it was supposed to be, whether it was. And there was a question as to also whether Borough of, the Borough of Red Bank has an easement over that ten-foot area. Um, and again, it's, it's not ten feet running through the middle of the project, it's ten feet on, on the, the, close to the roadway.
Yeah, may I explain it there? So everybody has this see where the yellow line is?
Oh, it's a middle street.
It's ten feet into the street. It's, and there's another thirty feet past that where cars travel. But you see how there's a um, a truck right there?
Yeah.
So when you drive there, it looks like the right-of-way, it looks, it's part of the street. But when you look at the plan, it's unclear whether this ten-foot portion was dedicated, vacated to the Borough.
Or whether it was even supposed to be.
Or whether it was supposed to be, but right now trucks and cars travel on it as if it was part of the road.
Part of the street.
So he's right, it's a cleanup. It, it needs to be cleaned up and, and rectified. Um, but that's, that's, that, it's per, it's a perfect picture to show you what is going on. There's pavement in the ten-foot area and there's trucks on it and cars on it that are traveling.
So what I, you know, was, was thinking, and again, it's totally subject to what you all want as a board and, and what the applicant agrees to, but um it's an old situation and it's probably, uh, as Mr. Nadal said, it's probably not going to be uh investigated today. It might be some title searches, it might be searches of easement records. And it definitely needs to be reviewed both by JCP and L and, and the Borough need, need to look at it to see what the arrangement was, was it ever memorialized, uh, should the arrangement be tightened up? Uh, sometimes fifty years ago, people weren't as technical as they are today and they might not have the whole harmless provisions or the insurance provisions or things like that that we would want today. So it is a good opportunity to look at it and um, so it's probably going to be uh, need to be looked at and uh look at old records and engage a title company maybe for a search and look at old tax maps. And I think Shauna has already spoken, um, give Shauna a big thumbs up, because we ended our conversation at five o'clock and between then and now, she's already spoken with the Borough attorney and she's already sent a memo to the clerk, Borough clerk looking for easement records. As I've said before, it's on her game. But there, there's, there's a lot, we need to know, is there an existing easement? Is it in writing, is it verbal, is, is what uh proposed going to interfere with that easement? So there's a couple of options, we could, one, take the option of, well, we don't care about it, forget about it and, and let's not worry about it. But we never take that option. And uh, the next would be, hey, have the applicant figure it out and, and come back to us and then we'll vote. Or a third option could be because of some potential timing sensitivity issues, uh, because of the time it's going to take to resolve it. And because a lot of this revolve, involves the Borough, not, not, not the zoning board, and, and because it doesn't necessarily uh, impact direct operations per se. If you were going to approve it, and I, I don't know if you're approving or not approving, but if you were inclined to approve it, one potential condition could be something like give the applicant ninety days or agreed upon extension to work at it with the Borough and let the Borough come back and say, you know, the Borough owns it and we're okay with this, or the Borough doesn't want to own it and take those arrangements, or the Borough say, hey, we have an easement. And the Borough says, hey, we have an easement and we don't want this to happen. Or, hey, we need that, the Borough said, we need this easement agreement to be modified and memorialized and, and, and better uh, better prepared. And so we can, as a condition, have them work it out to the satisfaction of the Borough. Um, and then just advise the Borough, I mean, advise the zoning board within ninety days in writing as to the response. My only um thing, we would have a couple of caveats, number one. Uh, if the application was approved with that condition, we, I think we'd have to have a pretty tight condition in there that says if the applicant can't work it out with the Borough, then they have to come back to us, meaning for, for new approval, meaning to avoid any doubt. Our, if it's approval, if, if the application is approved, our approval would be of no force and effect if they can't work it out with, with the Borough to make sure that they're all on board, to be, you know, liberally construed. And the second caveat would be that the applicant would basically release, defend and hold harmless, the Borough of Red Bank, the Red Bank Zoning Board, and our board members and agents and representatives and professionals and officers and officials, again, to be liberally construed, just so that I wouldn't want, not that Mr. Madel, uh, Nadal would, would do this, but I wouldn't want to be a musician where he said, well, why'd you give us the approval if we had to do this? So that would be, I'm assuming, Mr. Nadal, the option that you would want to, uh, you would prefer the option of, of the, hey, take ninety days to work it out with the Borough and knowing that if you can't work it out, then you're gonna have to come back here.
That's correct. I, I, I might ask if it's possible for a little bit more than ninety days, because I don't, I don't know what we're getting into here.
Okay.
What type of title we need or what
I, I, I just picked out, it could be any. So anyway, so, Mr. Chairman, that would be the, something for the board to think about, is, is that, uh, you know, again, the timeframe, I, I, you know, certainly at six months would be fine, or any agreed upon extension, but it's just, that's an element that Shauna and Jackie and I, and again, we, we're gonna bring it up in workshop, but we thought, you know what, just for more transparency purposes, just bring it up here. So, and it literally just came up today and, and, and uh, so anyway, that's see, see what the board thinks. I mean, uh, Jackie, did I?
Yep.
I, I gave a, a poor engineer's description of that, but did it sort of make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, what would you suggest we do as we all of your legal expertise?
If it's acceptable to the board, I think the, the option that we just talked about with the caveat that we're all being held harmless and that if they don't get the Borough approval, they don't have, our, our municipal, our zoning board approval goes away. I think that, that protects us all.
I mean, any objections to that, or questions from Mr. Kennedy?
I, I don't have any objection to that, but just looking at this project, I don't really see how that easement affects the conditional variances that we need to approve.
Exactly. And, you know, one of the things that I talked to Jackie about, saying, hey, is this interfering with sidewalks? Or, and you know, and the same like that, and, and it didn't appear to have any flash button items that, that would be problematic, but anyway, that, that's uh, and Shauna, I think you talked to the Borough attorney and he agreed that, not, not agreed to anything, but he agreed that they would look into it and, and, you know, I could send a letter and all, all that, uh, to put it. So anyway, that, that's just something we wanted to clearly need for, um, you know, discussion and guidance on, but.
And then what, what kind of timeframe were you thinking of, Mr. Nadal?
Between my, my last comment, you know, two minutes ago, I realized that if this goes the way it might be heading where the Borough would like to accept the ten feet, it's gonna take two or three months for an ordinance, uh, resolution adoption with the council, and that stuff takes time, especially around the holiday season. I, I'm gonna ask, can you give us nine months just in case this turns into something where we really have to investigate it? Again, the, the whole purpose here is for us to clean it up and I just want to make sure we have enough time to get that done.
I, I have no problem with that and clearly, they're gonna do it as quickly as they can. And I think we should say, whatever the timeframe, nine months or any agreed upon extension, because things happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Someone like to make a comment?
I'm sorry.
Oh, actually.
Public comment on this application. Any comment from the public?
So I did not realize that um, we're pulling up construction permits so that some of these improvements can get since this issue is not directly related to the improvements that we discussed today that are on the southern side of the property. Could the condition include something along the lines of that? The capital could move forward with construction while we're still working on this issue with the Borough. Um, perhaps, you know, final CO uh could be the condition. I'm, I'm hoping to avoid a scenario where JCP and L's ready to go start these improvements and we're still working on this during this nine-month period, or maybe it takes even longer. I'm, I'm hoping not to have the two hold up each other since they're, they're really separate issues and, and the construction is not going to be in the right way.
So my only question to that is that portion that sticks the cable that goes into the right-of-way that we're concerned about, is it possible? If the Borough says no, um, and there is an easement and the Borough says no, can you guys operate without, um, by pushing the cable back? The issue here. Because I think this is the issue here, is that it extends into the easement. So if the Borough says no and there is an actual easement into this ten-foot area, what's your substitution for that? Because this is the, the issue here.
I'm not sure I'm fully understanding the issue.
So because it's in the ten-foot area where this supposed easement
Have a new witness.
And our approval is contingent upon the council saying that this is okay to happen if the easement does actually exist. Can you guys operate by pushing it back or it has to be out by this line?
It has, it has to be out there because that, this is the pole, pole right there. So it's a drop off the pole and go underground.
So what happens if, and there is an actual
When you say easement, are you saying the utility?
Like this, this, that
Well, we're
The Borough is gonna be, uh, resurging.
Oh, well, the, the easement remain, the, the, the utility easement will control.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, the just sorry, I'm, I'm, I didn't, so the, the utilities right-of-way will, will remain.
Oh.
Re- re- regardless of, of the, so if, if the if the right-of-way is due to the Borough, the utility easement survives, it doesn't get extinguished.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, uh, what I would also suggest is between now and the adoption of the resolution, uh, Mr. Nadal and I can work on refining that language to include it. But we would also include a provision that anything they do would be at their own risk. Because if the Borough says no, so that, but I think we can, it's a technical issue and we can work that out with language if that's acceptable to the board.
So before we add for uh an approval or a denial, can you give us all of the information that we would be making this approval or denial on?
Sure, you mean the other conditions? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I think my only concern was, we allow them to start working, are we waving? Any rights, is the Borough waving there right now? If we're gonna come and say, no, you gotta, you can't do that. Then JCP and L may have to say, well, we've already relied on your representation and we've done it.
Well, I, I think that's an excellent point and that's why we would make it abundantly clear and would probably put this three, four, maybe five times in our document that there we are not waving any rights and they are doing it at their own risk. And, and I think also, Paul, you make a very good point. I think the first line, um, if we were all in our law school classrooms, I think Mr. Nadal would say, hey, let me figure this out before I come back and do this. But they have some timing sensitive issues, so I think Mr. Nadal, just for the record, uh, Mr. Cagno, a board member properly wants to make sure that any um approval that we give is, is appropriately uh worded to know that we encourage you to get the approval first before you do anything. And if you do it, you do it at your own We encourage you to get the approval first before you do anything, and if you do it, you do it at your own risk. And you're holding the borough and the zoning board harmless, and you understand that we are not waving any rights. And I think based on our conversations today, I think you understood that.
Yes, that. The applicant understands too that this issue needs to be resolved, it's not something that is just gonna go away. Our, you know, JCPenney's real estate department needs to work at this, they need to work with the borough, they need to review their records. Um, again, it's it's a discrepancy that needs to be cleaned up.
Um, so other, if the board is inclined, our other standard conditions would be compliance with the promises, commitments and representations a team made. Uh, compliance with the board engineer review memorandum. Uh, except as otherwise noted, compliance with any affordable housing contribution directives and payments, whatever they they are. Uh, obtaining any necessary outside approvals and our uh standard caveat to that is. If as a result of those outside approvals, the. Application or the requested relief materially changes, uh they need to come back. Uh, would be compliance with BPU regulations, obviously, I'm not gonna repeat it again, but those the uh conditions with the Borough of Red Bank. Um, approving the easement or right of way or dedication issues. Um, let's see, um, we're gonna have. With the landscaping, we always have perpetually maintaining and replacing and replanting that landscaping as necessary. And we're gonna have uh just that, just so I know, it could be, have a height of that pole, just so I can put it in there. Fifty feet, and then we also, Mr. Chairman, usually, um, one of the new conditions we started was having a before final. Uh permits or CEOs or whatever is issued, that the applicant's professional basically gives a certification that. The structure was built in accordance with the approved plans, in accordance with the testimony and in accordance with the. Uh, resolution and Jackie, real quick, I. I worked on another utility station, so just uh in another town. But just, is there anything that we need to worry about the fence being grounded, or is that like a construction code?
It's a construction.
Okay. And do we need any particular signs that says warning or danger, or is that a construction code?
I believe that's a building. Um, just. The plans show fifty-five feet. It's fifty-five, just.
Fifty-five feet? Okay.
The top of the the the. The pole itself.
And is there any um? Requirement, uh I know, and Mr. Chairman, you had talked about some fires and things like that. Is there any obligation that they need to work with the uh fire department or police department with a a knock box or any just a quarter?
Um, we we just require them to get sign off on the fire.
Okay. And then a couple of things that came up tonight will be real brief. Um, we talked. About. Uh, Jackie, I know there was, do we need any type of construction staging plan or anything that they have to work with the police department, or is that just part of? Our construction maintenance.
I.
Operations.
I I think that's part of a recon meeting.
Okay.
Talk about your staging, think they do have enough space to stage.
Got it. And we have um. Again, the work with the borough and Green Acres uh to hopefully put additional landscaping behind that park bench. We just have a good faith obligation there and let's see. Oh, I have a note here that if it's okay with Mr. Madell and if it's okay with Christine Cofone. If she would give me her outline, that will help me with my resolution, just confidentially and uh. We have the the nine months for the dealing with the Red Bank already agreed upon extensions. And all that information about at their own risk and the hold harmless and no waiver of rights. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I talked a little bit more than I wanted to, but. Uh, Ben, for the record, are you okay with those conditions?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Hey, anybody would like to make a motion to approve or deny this application?
Well, from my perspective, the benefits of this project, especially. The increase in reliability of the power supply to the citizens of Red Bank greatly outweigh. The minor variances that we need to provide this project, so I with that, I would move it.
And Tori?
Uh, yes.
Raymond Mas?
Yes.
Alan Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Euro?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Benson Mike?
Yes.
Paul Cagno?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Ben, we will be in touch.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have one ninety-six Broad Street.
Mr. Chair. Um, I live within two hundred feet of this project, so I need.
Sure. Okay. So before I forget. Let me do. Our um. Introductions, so first up, we're gonna uh. The applicant here. Is one ninety-six Broad LLC, and based upon my review of the documents. The principals are Carl Fortunato, Craig Porter and uh Frank Martorella. Hearing those names, does that create any uh conflicts or questions about conflicts or comments about conflicts, seeing none? Okay, and we will swear in uh for the second and final time tonight. Uh, Jacqueline Durman, our board engineer, and Shawna Ebanks, our director of community development. Ladies, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, let the record reflect, both witnesses have been sworn. And what we'll do is we'll mark into the record what we as a board have have before us. So A one is going to be the application package. And A two is going to be the minor subdivision slight plan prepared by. Uh, design architecture dated December first, two thousand twenty-three, revised June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of three sheets. A three is gonna be the survey prepared by Morgan Engineering and Surveying dated September eleventh, uh two thousand twenty-three. And as uh Jacqueline Durman indicates, it's incorporated into the minor subdivision plan referenced above. Um, and A four is going to be. The variance response letter prepared by Frank Martorella and Think Design Architecture dated July second, two thousand twenty-four. A five is the response to the first engineering review letter prepared by Edward J. McKenna dated October tenth, two thousand twenty-four. And A six is the T and M Associates review letter dated October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just uh take a little bit of time here to speak about a uh procedural journey that. Uh, brings the applicant here and to regular attendees of. Planning board meetings and or zoning board meetings and. Uh, the regular people who routinely watch and monitor the online agendas. Um, and to our friends uh around Waverly Place who may have received two different notices on the application. And for the benefit of the members of the board and public, I'd like to explain the procedural history. So this application was initially processed as a straight up subdivision application. And as where were subdivision applications traditionally come to the planning board. Unless there's a use or a D variance uh connected to that subdivision. So it was deemed to be a planning board matter and the attorney, Mr. McKenna, noticed for the planning board meeting. And uh but then right before the planning board meeting, our um. Insightful and astute engineer said, hey, wait a minute, uh I got some questions, something something something's up here. And so the the quirk of this. Not the quirk, but the new unique situation was. Um, there's gonna be an access driveway in a portion of the off-street parking for the mixed commercial residential use building on the one lot. Um, on the other lot, and the two lots, they're they're mixed lots, one's the residential zone and anyway, so it's going to be. Um, I guess the technical term, some of the proposed improvements. On the residential lot are gonna be considered accessible uses to the principal business use on the other lot. So that technically required a a use or a D variance. Um, and again, remember subdivisions come to us on the zoning board if there is a a use variance bulk. So why is it important? It's important because. You know, jurisdiction, 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 jurisdiction matters. The planning board can't approve or deny an application that should rightfully before us. Likewise, we cannot approve or deny an application which should rightly be before the planning board. And uh the first point of every resolution that we ever adopt, first finding and even in tonight's resolution was. We have a zoning board of jurisdiction to act, so that's why it's important. So uh what happened about uh two or three weeks ago, Shawna and Jacqueline and uh. Greg from her office, myself, had a big Zoom discussion on this and. We sort of came up with the idea that it was a a use D variance, so we called Mr. McKenna. And we said, hey, listen, if you think we're wrong, or if you have reasons to. For us to think about something else, we would be fine and um for the record, Mr. McKenna, as he always. Is was a gentleman and said, okay, I will renotice and and we'll we'll take care of it. And I thank him for that, and I thank his client for that, because that was, you know, definitely sort of a curve ball. Um, some other attorneys would have yelled and screamed and and said some not nice words and uh. But by the way, that would not change anything, but we always appreciate the the gentleman nature. So Mr. McKenna, on behalf of the client, renoticed because of the the jurisdiction matter. So people who showed up for the planning board meeting. Um, heard that basically it was dismissed from the planning board and transferred over here. So hopefully that clears up some of the the mystery and the confusion about this nuanced procedural uh matter. But anyway, that I just wanted to state that for the record, and I hope I didn't steal uh Mr. McKenna's thunder, but just. Speaking of the notice, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? For tonight's hearing? Okay, we don't see it, yes.
Sufficiency of the notice for tonight?
Yes.
No notices.
Okay, why don't you just come up so we can hear you and just state your name? Your name is?
Mike Harper.
And address? Okay, and you're saying that you did not receive a notice? I'm sorry, oh.
My microphone?
Yeah.
Yes.
So yes, we did not receive a new notice.
Okay, and and just hold on one second and we're going to. Uh, so while Alini here is looking, there's sort of a. Quirk in the statutory requirements for for the notice. Um. All that is technically required is that the applicant has to mail it to the correct address in a timely fashion. And sometimes, and I know this firsthand, and it's not a good answer, but sometimes there are some issues with. The post office, um, so uh. Alini, do you have an arena white slip? Okay, or Mr. McKenna will look for it too.
I'm tracking ready.
Okay. And. We'll just.
Also the project notice.
Okay, and I'm sorry, so we're looking for.
Fifteen ways.
Okay.
Mike, you guys. You know each other, yeah, you got the first one and not get a second?
Correct.
All right, so. Fifteen Waverly Place, I have a white slip here to Harper, comma, Raymond and Penderville. Megan, fifteen Waverly Place, Red Bank, oh seven, seven, oh one, it was mailed September thirtieth. Um, so Mr. McKenna, is that, that's, I'm assuming this is the document that we're talking about?
Yeah.
And that that's the letter, Mr. Harper, that's your address, fifteen?
I didn't know your address.
So, anyway. By law, all that has to happen is that you have to send it to the right place, and I hate when these things happen, so I'm I'm very. Happy that you're here tonight and at least have time, because it would have been worse if if you didn't know, and there might be some other people, I get it, who who didn't know. But legally, the notice is sufficient if he sent it to the right place and he advertised it in in time. So I appreciate it, and I really am, in all seriousness, glad that you're here to be able to. Voice concerns or ask any, you know, voice their objections or ask any questions.
All right, thank you.
Okay, were there any other questions about the the notice? Okay, so, but thank you, Mr. Harper, so based upon that. Um, uh, the board secretary and I did review the notice and found it uh sufficient, so it'd be my. Again, humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to to proceed tonight. Um, so against that backdrop, we should um welcome uh Mr. McKenna and and turn it over to him. Um. Begin.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and uh, Mr. Kennedy, I wanna thank you. For providing the board the explanation of how. Of the history of this application. Um, because what appeared to start out as very, as a very simple. Uh, two one subdivision. We are, now we are where we are today. Um, however, um. T and M, uh, and rightfully so, um, wrote us a very detailed letter. Uh, in September twenty-sixth, uh, Jacqueline's office sent it to us and. Wasn't the the date. We did not have adequate time to amend our plans. So what I did was, on October tenth, I prepared a very detailed letter and sent it to a P and M. To address all the concerns raised in your letter. And I I actually got a call from a member of your office the other day, and my food, but that's the person also. And they indicated they were satisfied with the letter and its explanation. But what I would like to do is perhaps. To the same time, um, is go through your letter, if you if you want to, Jacqueline. And uh, because I think we have addressed everything into there. And even I've been able to add a few other things to make things even better.
Okay.
So. I have Mr. Martorella, who's still here tonight. But I think we might save a lot of time if I could run through your letter with the board. If that would be acceptable, Mr. Chair?
Would you wanna present your case first and then go through the letter?
Um, well, I did, I go through the letter. Well, yeah, perhaps. If everyone has their plans, essentially, there are, uh, there's an existing structure. At one ninety-six Broad. That is a small dental office and one apartment. Um, the apartment has one resident and the dental office has a dentist and two employees. The office is only open, it's closed three fully, three days a week. It operates part-time, two to three days a week, and it only uh operates full-time a day to two days a week. Um, that's that's the dental office. There are two lots here that enjoy each other. So the doctrine of merger applies also, because um the two lots, because they were acquired. In in such a manner, the. Tax assessment office, essentially. And in that process, that's why we're asking for a subdivision. We would need to be asking for a subdivision, the only thing we'd be asking for is the ability to allow. The parking of two parking spaces on the residential lot. Um, but because we have that, uh, in order to meet the parking needs and why the difference, rather than ask for a parking variance. What we did was, we we agreed to grant an easement. Since it's the same owner, you know, granting an easement to ourselves, so to speak, to allow two parking spaces to this time. In a split portion of the residential lot. And hence the the D one variance, and I do have uh. Mr. O'Neill tonight to testify as the positive and negative criteria. But it is a fully conforming residential lot. Uh, so we don't need variances, uh, basically, I want to address those. And the only real variances that. Come into play here are all pre-existing based upon the. And the only real variances that come into play here are all pre-existing based upon the. The existing commercial building, commercial slash residential building, including the dental office. And those are the things that were essentially noticed and in the letter. Where there are pre-existing uh, variances. Those are the location of the structure that was built many years ago. So essentially, what would happen would be you'd be creating a residential lot. On uh, Waverly Place, which to and I have to credit our client. Uh, when he looked at the opportunities that he had as far as utilizing that property. Could have expanded the commercial use, but we got into a discussion and he said, you know something? Waverly is a very nice residential street, I like it very much. I'd much prefer to add another single-family lot. And let the commercial use sit on on its own. And uh, he's had people approach him, a number of people. Uh, over years, uh, and especially recently, I guess, with uh, increased demand for housing, particularly in Red Bank. About creating a residential lot and building, building either help them building it or else allowing someone else to build a house. On that residential lot, so that would keep Waverly residential from the corner of Maple. All the way down to uh, this property, meaning uh, the dental office. But the dental office is not the property on the corner. It is literally next door to the property on the corner, that's a law piece. So even, so it's consistency on Broad Street and it would be consistency on Waverly. So it would be uh, according to the client and and I would respectfully submit to the board. It would continue the use on each block and ensure some sensitivity towards uh. The area to the residents on Waverly. So that's, that's how we got to where we are today. So it would be subdividing the. The lot on Waverly, the entrance on Waverly, the driveway entrance on Waverly. Uh, the existing entrance to the commercial property is also on Waverly, it's landline. They come through Waverly, so we would be getting an easement. To the dental office to get over the property, get to the parking lot. The parking spaces rather, for the commercial. That makes sense to everyone. And uh, Jack, do you need any more information than that, do you know?
Uh, I don't, it's.
It's, I don't have any more information, but that's essentially, I mean, I I know you all have the. Uh, so it would be that and um. We we'd submit, but rather than expanding the commercial use. And you utilizing that property for commercial use says much better utilized as uh, as a residential property. In keeping with the the neighborhood, I believe. Um, if if the board would like, I mean, I can call Mr. Martinella up. Welcome to ask him any questions, but I wanted to provide you with some history as far as how we got to where we are and why we're before you. And uh. I I'll welcome any questions, if I can answer the board or I'll call Mr. Martinella, like to ask him. Any advice about. At least, I mean, apparently, it's a, it's a creation of a, of a, a lot. Uh, it's in, it's in the RV zone and the commercial property would remain in their zone. So so there's no really uh. The variances, the uses, except for the fact of the two parking spaces. Um, we were concerned a little bit with some landscaping. Uh, and Jackie, you know what I'm saying? We actually have have uh, arranged to get some additional landscaping. Um, on the, on the. Easterly side of the property along the adjoining lot, the uh, the corner lot. We can, we've actually come up with a way of placing some plantings along there. And on the uh, westerly side of the property, we now can, you know, plantings along there too. So we will have buffers, they won't necessarily be uh, compliant with uh, the five-foot requirement. On the west side, it'll only be three feet, you want to give enough space there where cars can park in the driveway. Uh, other than that, I think uh, you've made substantial improvements, thankfully with your suggestions, too. Would anybody on the board have any other questions or concerns?
I just have a question, just to clarify the way I'm looking at it on here. The house, that you have the house and then there it looks like this is on Waverly and then there's. The um, driveway to get into the commercial parking on one side of the house and then on the other side, there's a driveway. For the two spaces that you were talking about. Or do I have that wrong?
No, it's okay, but when you pull into the driveway to get to the commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, parking, so to speak, which set the view of of the Waverly property, as I call it.
Right.
Um, there are, there's, there would be an easement for two parking spaces to be allowed to park there during the workday. And um, that would be for the professional office and there's also an apartment there also. So they have one resident that lives in the, they have a small apartment. In the commercial building. Um, but there, and then there's a separate driveway for the future. Home, so to speak, to be built on Waverly.
Okay, that's what, yeah, it looks like the house is surrounded, yeah, drive, two driveways around, right, okay, okay.
Anything else?
The um, first. The first driveway for access to the parking on the commercial, it it does go from the front of the lot to the to the back of the lot?
Right.
Okay, I I wasn't clear with the plan, and then the other driveway also goes from the, from Waverly to the end of the lot?
Correct.
Okay, and then, can you just?
To the end of the Waverly, but as far as they want to go. In other words, you you don't have to, uh, if someone were to build a house there, they don't have to take. That driveway and bring it all the way to the back, they could bring it up halfway if they wanted to. Because we're removing the shed that's in the back there and we're going to put plantings, actually even in that area behind. Uh, you'll see almost like a bear's face from the uh, from where the. We can actually run them down all the way uh, on the, what I'll call the northly side of the property.
Are the, are the um, parking spaces for the commercial actually on the commercial lot? On the, on the, in other words, closer to the building that's on Broad?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, so the turning, how how would one make a turn when they get to the end, when they get to those spots?
Actually, they can back right, they can back right out and get out through the driveway, which is really what they do now.
So they pull in straight ahead and then to get out, they gotta go in reverse?
Um, well, actually, in some spaces, they'll be able to to just back out and 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 exit. There's one spot that in um, in Ms. Durman's uh, letter, she refers to the fact that somebody has to do a K-turn for one spot. That's the apartment. And that's what they've been doing all along, because I was the closest to the commercial building. So that person's been doing it for years.
Yeah, I mean, but do we see an issue with the patience of the dentist currently or any other business that may go in there?
Well, that's pretty, pretty much what they're doing now. So I I I don't think there's any problem, and and forgive me for saying this, but this is. This is the, the practice has been in existence for a long time. It's not an intense practice and it can't be because they don't have the, the uh, square footage. Uh, if you know what I mean, I mean, it's one dentist, it's two of us, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess until the business changes hands and someone else puts something in there, it could become a thriving business.
It it, well, it it could, but you don't have a lot of space.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so it's not like you're gonna have ten patients going there in any. It is just physically not viable.
Yeah. I'm just not familiar with any other. Parking configuration where someone has to pull into the front of a lot, drive to the back of the lot, and in order to get out, put it in reverse and. Look over your shoulder and back.
No, no, oh no, I'm sorry, you don't have to do that at all, no, you'll have, there's a, where you can back your car up, turn and then.
Okay, so so K-turn and get out?
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. I'm I'm sorry if I gave you, done this.
Yeah.
So did you want to swear in, um, Mr. Martinella?
Sure.
Alright, good evening and welcome to the Red Bank Zoning Board, if you could just uh, state your name, please, and and address?
Mike Martinella the third, home address or business address?
Uh, home address would be great.
And Branch Court, Marlboro, New Jersey.
Okay, and uh, can you spell your last name?
M A R T A R E L L.
Alright, uh, good evening, if you just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes, sir.
Alright, have a seat, and my understanding is that you are one of the members of one nine six Broad LLC?
Right.
And one nine six Broad LLC is the owner, correct?
Alright.
And roughly, how long has the entity owned the property?
Probably right around a year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
Um, Mr. Martinella, you heard all the representations I made to the board this evening concerning this particular property and how it's been operated and.
McKenna, I don't think that Mike is.
I'm sorry.
Not being the rock star.
Just be quick. I'm not, no, you.
Just talk loud.
Um, you heard the representations I made to the board, the deliberations that you had in coming to this. Particular form of application with your sensitivity to Waverly and the commercial property. And that's how we got to this point where the suffocation has been made, correct? Correct. And um, as the the representations that I made to the board concerning how it operates right now. In fact, I forgot to mention even trash removal. Uh, as I understand it, the dental office had a garbage can that they put out for the burrow pickup, is that correct?
Correct.
And any medical waste that they have is picked up by a service that comes by when needed.
Correct.
Um, there was a question raised in uh, in Ms. Durman's letter about any drainage problems on the site. And it's, if I understand it, you have been advised and you you and your professional capacity. By the way, let me, let me just look in your credentials, uh, you're you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Correct.
You and your office prepared the site plan and subdivision plan, have a seat, okay?
Yes.
And. How long you been a professional uh?
Registered architect in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and ten?
And um. Once again, you and you and I sat down and went through the T and M letter and prepared the response. That we mailed to T and M on October the tenth. Yes, we did that together. Yes. Any questions of, Mr. Martinella?
Any, any questions from from the public for Mr. Martinella? Okay.
From C. Okay, so um. Does everyone on the board have a letter of uh, the the letter of T and M of September twenty sixth?
No, I didn't mark that one, I marked in the one for October fifteenth, should I mark the?
It's basically the same one.
Yeah, the the October, the September twenty sixth letter is everything that's not shown in bold in the October fifteenth letter.
Okay.
So, if I might, um, in our response. Um, there were a number of planned revisions that were requested, but due to the timing issues, we were not able to get those. Ends revised in time to submit them and have them filed here to the office at least ten days prior to tonight's hearing. So what we did was we prepared a response to uh, Ms. Durman and the T and M. Um, directing our comments to very specific uh, points of their letter and um. They correctly indicated that the three uh, variances for uh, that are referred to. On page four of their letter, uh, paragraph one, two, they're all pre-existing, non-conforming. Um, variances into the location of the office building. Um, we were asked to uh, recalculate the unaccompanied office space, which has been done, and we're going to be submitting that. Um, also, we were asked to, we need lot coverage and we'll be, hopefully, all of it, we'll do that. And then we have all site um. Conditions in paragraph two is on page five. Um, and there are requests in two point one, two point two, uh, two point three, um. And three point four. All of those will be, but they will be on the amended plans. So everything that T and M has asked for, we can provide, uh, five and six are nothing that we naturally. Uh, wouldn't comply with it. On. Uh, page six. Uh, there is no parking variance that is necessary here, um, so we don't have, it's an issue that not before the board. Um, I addressed earlier the K-turn.
No, I'm sorry, could I just ask Jackie, I remember she had something about nine required, eight eight proposed, but is that a parking variance not necessary?
It is not because of the EV requirements, so they can take, because they're providing. Space um, that reduces their parking requirements.
Thank you.
I would like to ask with with respect to parking, um, item three point three, where we talk about the ADA accessible. Uh, van accessible states?
Yeah, they do that.
Um, how, in your plan, how are you going to do that without reducing parking spaces?
I, I was able to, I was able to shift uh, some of the parking spaces slightly. And thereby also being able to increase the parking spot for the van to the required eleven foot and in the five-foot access sign. Adjacent to it, adjacent to it. So I, so I'm not reducing any of the parking, just able to shift them uh, slightly. Just because I already had the parking spot there, it was just a little narrow, that's all.
That's right, so you, right now, you have um, an eight-foot parking spot shown on the plan, ADA spot? And you're gonna add another three feet, right? So are you gonna take it from the right or the left, like, how are you doing that?
Uh, I believe it was um, mostly, well. Hold on, let me get the right orientation, mostly from the west side of that spot.
So do, wouldn't that shift spaces one through six, three feet to the left?
Correct, yeah, so let me, as a broader picture, I, you're right, I took parking spaces one through six. I shifted them to the left a little bit, but I also took the easement as well. And the five-foot planting buffer on the west side of the easement shifted all of that. It's towards the, to the left, to the west slightly, that enabled me to enlarge the actual parking space number seven, which is the ADA parking space from eight to eleven. The five-foot aisle was already there.
Right.
The, the, the added benefit, if you will, of that is that I was also able to now add screening. Um, along the property line on the. Did I say east equal?
The west.
I I shifted the 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 easement and everything to the, to the, and the parking spaces to the west, I said that, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But doesn't that change that line, the the, the actual? Does it change anything on the plan in terms of your proposed lot lines by shifting it?
No, it doesn't change the lot lines, the lot lines are already established and have been.
Oh, I'm sorry, correct, correct, right, but what about the driveway easement? Does that shift?
Correct, so the driveway easement, along with the five-foot planting buffer that was already shown on the west side of the easement, I did shift that. To the west a little bit. And then, if you sort of continue with the math, that left a three-foot space on the east side of the easement. Which is where I'm now able to provide a planting buffer to also help provide conformance with other comments that you had raised.
Okay. I just, I haven't seen this plan, just.
You what?
I I haven't seen this plan, this is all just fresh and new.
No, this is, this is very, a lot of different subjects, I mean. Um. If I can go back to. The engineering letter. Um, paragraph 3.5. And trash recyclables, uh, we addressed. Um, hours of operation, we addressed already. Um, HVAC is not going to be changed in any way. Uh, any future HVAC that would be accompanied, the, uh, possible home would be built there. That would be located as a time they apply for the building permits.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Martin just advised me there. All of the HVAC, HVAC on the property has already been fully replaced, uh, into the permits obtained from the board. Obviously, 3.8, we're gonna, uh, existing driveway waverly will be reconstructed according to ordinance then. And the parking area in, as in disrepair, uh, the plans will be revised to clearly depict all the areas of pavement that are being remotely closed, if going to your request. Um, we did not...
Sorry, Ed, I'm sorry. Can we go back to 3.4A? Um, same page, page seven. So there's a requirement, um, to provide at least three feet between the property line and a driveway. And right now, your proposed driveway is right up against the property line. Are you then also with this new plan shifting the depressed curb?
Which, can I ask which depressed curb you're referring to? The one that provides access to the easement or the one that provides access to the, uh, two residential parking spaces for the proposed new building? Okay. So, um, on the west side of the proposed new building is a 12-foot side guard setback or a 12-foot setback from the property line to the building. Uh, I have a nine-foot parking pad, two nine-foot wide parking pads, which leaves three feet for a planting buffer, which, uh, will be added in the updated drawings that you receive. On the east side of the easement, as I made, uh, reference to earlier, by shifting the easement over three feet, I was able to achieve the planting buffer there as well, that's performance.
And I was on site today, there's, um, a lot of bamboo right now, I guess, that acts as a buffer? I think that's bamboo.
Yeah.
It's like a thick, is that all coming down?
We've, uh, we've been battling the bamboo since day one. We removed it from the west... From the north side of the property. We continue to maintain and remove that. On the east side of the property, uh, to the adjacent residents, we haven't started to remove it, but under the proposed construction, it would be removed.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we did not provide a traffic report because there's no change in the use. And we don't know, we can't control that single-family home would be built there. Uh, that's all that we're asking for, is subdivision that would allow a single-family home. But, uh, out of traffic that would be generated from a single-family home is insignificant. So we do not believe that it would be necessary to supply traffic report. Um, as far as the question of, uh, delivery vehicles, there are none. The dental office doesn't use any to get to the property. Uh, we would imagine will not require any to come onto the property. Uh, there, there are no garbage trucks. And, um, obviously, any fire trucks wouldn't follow whatever directions the fire officials wants to as part of access for the fire trucks. As far as page seven, paragraph five, check one, we will get to all the elevations spots. That's rather... And, uh, and we've had no drainage issues on the property. We do not anticipate any change in that regard. Um, on page eight, we are going to provide you with a very detailed landscape plan that will show you all the additional plantings, um, which I think, uh, we're and, you know, we're very happy with. We've managed to add quite a bit as far as landscaping is there. The, um... Yeah, it's like, there's no drainage issues on the property. Um, landscaping, again, we're gonna submit a detailed plan. Um, there's no change in the lighting planning that we now have. Um, as far as compliance with the borough ordinance with shade trees, the, uh, its contribution to the tree funds that if we can't plant the, the habit, the street trees will make the contribution. Um, we will also review any recommendations of the shade tree committee. And by the way, the landscaping plan will have, um, the spacing on the strip that you referred to in paragraph 6.5. And, um, we do, now we do have plantings, uh, as referred to in paragraph 6.6. We just discussed the bamboo. And as far as, um, revising the plans to include elimination values, the values within the parking area, that will also be, um, on the amended plan. And we're beginning to make getting these plans there very quickly, but, um... We will, of course, provide the base description to your office and to Mr. Kennedy. Um, and we're gonna work on that. Um, we asked for a waiver on submitting architectural plans and elevations because we don't know if we're gonna be the ones constructing the house or there have been a number of inquiries concerning the lot. And we don't want to be speaking for someone and show the board the house with floor plans and architectural detail. If it's not the house that's gonna be built, I think that's, that would not be the right way for us to present it. On page nine, there's a reference to repairs to an existing staircase. We're down, got the permits and fixed the staircase, it's done. And, um, we did testify already on 7.4, we provided the testimony concerning the hours of operation and the employees in the dental office. Well, nothing, um, of real soil, a lot of county, um, and of course, with regard to Red Bank, we'll have everyone to, um, know about. Yeah, I didn't mean to try to simplify this, but I just think it's, I mean, we brought a very helpful letter. And, uh, we spent a lot of time trying to address all the concerns and we got it.
What I'm understanding, you subdivide this lot. You could, could you have, you'd have, you could have one owner on one lot, one owner on another lot?
Yeah, in other words, we get so often to subdivide a lot.
But that comes with an easement.
That's correct.
No matter what, that carries with an easement for...
It'll be a recorded easement that the Kennedy will review and T and M will review and everybody will have to sign with.
Okay. All right.
Any other question? Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Come on.
All right, so, uh, couple things. Good evening, Mr. White. If you could just state your name and address.
Good evening, Vincent White, 20 where it was placed in that.
Okay, and do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. And can I just, before you, uh, ask, I wanna just, uh, say a couple things for the board. So obviously, um, Vince is, uh, one of our longtime and excellent board members. So he recused himself from this application. And, uh, so there's always a question, can he participate in the hearing? And I don't officially know whether he's supporting and objecting or just asking questions, but that's sort of irrelevant, but we'll, we'll get back to that in a minute. So the law says that, uh, any, any of us, uh, on the board, we don't forfeit our property rights just because, uh, you all are good enough to volunteer your time on the board. Now, sometimes it says, hey, it would be easier or better or more preferred if you could have your questions or comments or objections or support, uh, made through an attorney or a spouse or an architect, but sometimes that's not always practical. And as a practical matter, we knew it would be coming from, from Mr. White anyway. So, and the other thing is, we don't have the ability to transfer cases. If there's a conflict, Red Bank, in Red Bank Municipal Court, they'll sometimes have Little Silver handle it. Um, as is only word, we can't transfer this to the planning board because, remember my jurisdiction speech before, and we can't transfer it to Little Silver, uh, planning board, so we have to deal with it. So the only thing that I think we have to recognize and we have to, um, be mindful, and we always do this, is, is whether Mr. White is gonna speak against the application, speak for the application, or speak, just ask questions. I think we have to be abundantly clear that, um, even though he's a member of the board and, um, and a friend of people on the board, that we can't treat his questions or his comments or his support or his objections, any, uh, give it any more weight or any less weight than we do for every other member of the public. So, uh, Mr. McKenna, do you generally agree with that proposition?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. And, and so just for the, for the record, for board members, are we all okay? We can, we can accept, um, our, you know, the, the comments, okay?
This is questions, not comments right now, so he's asking questions, not particularly making a comment right now.
Got it. So against that, welcome to the Red Bank Zoni Board.
Thank you. Um, I do have a bunch of questions based on the letter. But in some of your testimony, you said that you've made reference to changes that you've made but haven't been able to apply. Is there a way that we can actually see all of these changes that you've already made to the plan, to the proposal? He's not gonna keep, but he has done a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time, but it's not in final form yet. There's a few, a few things that we even have to make will probably impact what, what, uh, may come about. But it has been something that Mr. Martin, at least I know, because I've been on the phone with him, very tatty, a couple of weeks now, and, uh, he's been working laboriously to try to come up with plans. So he's gonna have them, uh, very shortly and submit them, and we tried to do, Vince, if you don't mind, and what we tried to do was to amend the point in, in a manner so that we would satisfy all of the requirements of the T and M letter. And I would say we... Probably, I'm sure we've done the... It's great that we can bring up these changes. Um, do you think it's appropriate for the board to make a decision on this matter without seeing the actual proposal and the details of the proposal? I, I've done this many times before and, um, especially when we go into the amount of detail that we did with, with T and, with T and M's letter. What we tried to do was, any concern that T and M had, we believe we have satisfied them or perhaps even exceeded what they requested. So we will be submitting the detailed landscape plan, everything that we presented in safety, we will be providing. And Vince, if you want, you know, I mean, you were saying this, but we don't even directly accompany the plans as soon as...
I'd love to be able to find input into the plan as they come up with changes.
Actually, you know, if, if you want, what we could do is, um, informally, we could set up a meeting date sometime soon. And give us any input we got. If you feel comfortable doing it.
I would feel comfortable doing that? The only problem is, the matter is before the board tonight, so, you know, putting the horse...
You have a nice car? Um, I, I, well, I think that most of the changes, I don't wanna say they're cosmetic. The, what, the application is before the board tonight primarily is the subdivision and, uh, and the site plan. And the site plan concerns that were raised, we believe will all be, um, addressed, given plan. So, so whenever we've had an application like this before, um, if we believe that we satisfied the requests of the board engineer or if board members had a particular item that they wanted to focus on and said, would you change the plan and do this to it? We would look at, look at each other, we'd dress, sometimes we'd excuse ourselves from the room and go outside and then we'd come back. Yes, we find it to be acceptable to, um, our client.
I'm also, I'm, I'll be referring to the letter from T and M, I gave it in October 15th.
And Vince, just for the record, that is A6.
A6.
Just, um, oh wait. I didn't have that in the letter. I, I'm done, Dazzy, maybe it's been upset to me, but I, I'm done.
What? Most of it is similar to the September letter. The only stuff that is different is the stuff that's quoted in this letter. And if there's a difference on that, you know.
Okay. Sure. My first question was on the clarification of the curb easement on the west side of the lot. So the current plan had the driveway right up against the lot, the property lot, and there was no buffer. I believe our curb that has been amended and everything has shifted over three feet. So does that mean the driveway is now longer 12 feet wide and maybe nine feet wide?
Yes. If the driveway, the driveway, yeah, driveway was shown as 12 feet wide. Uh, the parking stalls were shown as nine feet wide. We shifted the nine-foot parking spots over to be directly adjacent to the building, uh, and also shift, I'm sorry, and also shifted the driveway. And I, I may have misspoken that, I don't think the driveway was ever shown. Give me one second. The driveway was never shown as, as 12 feet wide, it just wasn't...
I'm missing this.
Does it say, like, say...
It says 12.
Oh, then I, I apologize.
Well, I, well...
It, I, I think it's, it's a 12-foot setback in the property line to the building.
It's very small, it's 12 feet in the property line to the building.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you have the ability, it might be too small, but if you look at the, uh, at the front end of the driveway where it's closer to the curb, it actually says 10-foot wide max.
So given that you're, you're putting in a double-wide driveway on the inside, why even have a driveway on the west side that adds more impervious to the plan when you can share that driveway and put, provide parking in the back lot, maybe where the garages?
Okay, so, um, the garage is gonna be demolished, um, and is no longer gonna be in existence. The, there's, there is an ordinance that requires two-way drive aisles to be 24 feet wide. So if I, if I infringe upon the 24-foot wide driveway with two parking spaces, it's no longer a 24-foot wide driveway.
Not if you have parking spaces behind the house.
Not if that parking space is behind the house.
Um okay, so oh, so to to me, the okay, uh if I put the parking spaces behind the house, then the residents of the of the proposed house have no real yard at all. They would become parking spaces, they'd have car back, two cars back there. So I by design, that's to me not a good design.
I don't understand, you're you're going to specify parking on the commercial side, you're going to put a backwards. You've said that you can't designate parking behind the house for the residents?
I'm not saying I can't, I'm not, I'm saying that it's not preferred. I I physically can draw and show parking spaces behind the residence, but then the residents of the one-family home have no yard. They have two parking spaces in their backyard. So to me, it's not a it's not a favorable design.
Can I can I interject something? I I'm I'm getting confused too and wait a second, no plans in front of us, so what are you doing? I don't know how I could approve this. I mean, you need to amend, you said you were going to amend the plans, well, I'd suggest you amend them and bring them back to us so everybody's clear on exactly what you're doing.
But the change that he's the 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 question at hand is not a change, I'm not changing anything. The side plane that you see right now that you have in front of you shows two residential parking spaces for the proposed one's one-family residents on.
There we shift, but there's no changes to those plans at all. Those plans do exactly what you're going to do.
No, no, that's not, forgive me, that's not what I'm saying. He's asking, he he's making it sound as if we're going to provide two parking spaces behind the one-family residence.
It's it's.
That's not what I'm doing. And that's not what's proposed before the board.
It's not based on his questions, it's based on the fact that all of a sudden plans that you had have changed and we typically as a board, we don't approve anything without a set of plans.
I'll I'll let Ed answer it, I'm I'm not trying to speak to that, I'm just trying to say that I'm not proposing parking spaces in the back of the one-family home. No, he asked if I could do it, I said yes.
You understand that.
But it feels like we're sitting here listening to work product in a negotiation that should be taking place in a workshop or previous to the meeting, not during the meeting. Should bring us a complete package to prove.
And and by the way, had had this not played out the way it played out.
I understand.
And and the calendaring of trying to get back on the calendar to be before uh that was part of the reason why we presented this this way. Um and this is no reflection on anybody, but we thought we were going to be before the planning board a month ago. And then we got a phone call in the middle of the night and told uh change of plans, we think you gotta go to the zoning board. We were happy to accommodate, we we did, we said, we get the first possible date. Um we got it and we we got TNM's letter, which was very helpful. We tried to ready to run the race to the finish line and get the plan done in time, we just couldn't do it. That's why I chose to write this letter to TNF. We understand exactly what you're saying, I think our concern is we're in, it is October seventeenth, no more meetings in October. There's, I think, either one or two meetings in November, correct? I'm I'm.
Two meetings.
Are there two meetings? Sean, when will we be able to come back? The day is September.
The December fifth and the nineteenth.
Yeah, well, um I have another application on the fifth, that's that's going to be a long application, but perhaps what we can do is if we get put this on first and then we'll have all the plans done. And it'll give you a complete set. Again, this would not our desire.
I I I understand, but you gotta understand our point of view, being on the board that typically we will, I mean, I don't think I've ever approved anything without a set of plans that's accurate.
Um. Okay.
That'd be, I'd maybe maybe the rest of the board is comfortable with that, I don't know.
Oh, I'm I'm.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you.
Sometimes, depending on what the nature of the changes are. Um I I I would even say before this board, but for example, on uh um went on Mojave, uh the condos over there, um that we, there were a number of conditions. I remember Jackie Thor uh testified, she said, oh, we're going to make that change, we're going to make that change, we're going to make that change. And even the board said, well, we want you to revise, oh, no, you know what, I'm sorry. That was that was that's the thing, I take it back. That was that's the thing. So uh if we get on for December fifth, what's our best bet, what happened to economy?
Well, your other application that day is going to be a long one, yeah, Ed.
You know, I mean, as long as we're going to put on first.
Visions, the state might want.
I would hope it, as it's the information we provided today. You have the opportunity to see the revised plans before the meeting. I don't think our tennis sporting will be markedly different. Um Neil's going to testify on the planning aspect, that's not complex on this application.
Right.
So um you know, if if uh if you think that would work and we can put that on first, that would be great.
Fine.
If I may make a suggestion to try to make it smoother on December fifth, maybe invite some of the neighbors who have never seen the plan to see the plan before it's actually presented. And then you won't have confused neighbors showing up that might make the meeting longer. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, okay, so a couple of things, and I think that's an excellent idea. So it sounds like we are going to um make a motion to carry this application to December fifth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M. And uh Mr. McKenna, I'm assuming you're going to say to ask without any further notice.
Yes, but I I will note that um parent didn't get his notice.
Oh, Mike.
Yeah, Mike, yeah, Mike, and Joe had.
For a few people that called and said they didn't get it. Yeah.
All right. Well, locked in for whatever reason. Really?
Yeah, it was.
Post office. Yeah, I mean, I I get the here's the notice, we sent it out, so this lady, we can't.
So what we're going to do, I mean, we'll say without notice, but uh Mr. Harper and friends, please, and Vince, please let other people know um if if they're interested in 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 the in the project. And uh for the record, uh Mr. McKenna, do you, on behalf of your client, consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And what we'll do is, I think, again, Mr. White's suggestion is good. Uh Mr. Martorella, if you feel the need, you could reach out to to some of the um and it just, it would just eliminate some of, but I I do think the information, a lot of the information that was presented tonight was helpful. So, Mr. Chairman, um we have a request to adjourn this hearing to February, I'm sorry, to December fifth, two thousand twenty-four, six thirty P M uh without the need for any further uh public notice. Uh do we have a motion on that effect?
Yeah, make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay, I promise we will have final plans for you. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
A little housekeeping comment I'd like to make for the board. Uh to do with the application law, but that is now the appropriate time to make a comment? Kevin?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um it was interesting point, I was thinking the same thing that you guys were thinking, we've got these existing plans. Quite frankly, the JCPN L plan that we all just voted yes for was very similar, right? We come in and we've got these plans, oh, we got this ten-foot problem that runs along with the place, but we're going to figure it out, we want the approval. I mean, how do we avoid these uh applicants coming before us? And we've got a half set full of plans and making all these changes. I mean, I personally am not comfortable approving, just like Ray wasn't this, because I don't have a set of plans, but JCP now is not too different, we've got this issue, hey, we're going to figure it out, we're going to hire a title company. Hey, but we want to start working first on it, and everyone's like, okay, let's do it. But I'd like to avoid that moving forward if we can, so I don't know if it's if it's an administrative thing that we can catch before having people come down here and say, look, let's push this a month and get us the plan, but I don't.
Very rare when that happens. The JCP and L one is is I think more because of infrastructure stuff that affects multiple towns, so it's important that we move that forward based on the same conditions that we approved it on.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of this one that just came before us, you know, could we have told this applicant? Hey, let's push it out three weeks, we want to need a full set of plans.
That was.
Because he's paid for experts, he's got notice, he's paid for his attorney to come down here, and it's it's person on the applicant.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
I know, and I think.
Said in advance, I think it's helpful more efficient.
I think you make a good point, uh and I think the the answer is um to your point, Mr. Chairman, it's it's typically a matter of degree, I'm sorry, I have my back to the to the right side of the room, it's a matter of degree. Something like, hey, if you could move the garbage dumpster from the right side, at east side to the west side, or hey, if you could throw additional landscaping in here, those things I people can visualize, and it's a matter of degree. It sounded like there was some confusion as to what the plan for, I got a little nervous when when Jackie said, oh, I haven't seen these revised plans. So, you know, but yes, we are, we are, we always are sensitive to it because we are sensitive to the time and the aggravation and the cost of everybody and the the, so I think, you know, we could just make a a, you know, a note to try to catch these things when we can. Some of them just happen and some of them have a little.
What happens if we say we'd like to move the garbage? We can't catch that administratively, if you
Right.
request someone to move the garbage, right?
And.
I think it's more, it's got to be more nuanced than just a blanket.
Yeah, and.
Being six parking spaces or seven parking. More but more nuanced, so it can't be.
Right, and what we, there are some boards, just so you know, and it's really a matter of what you all want. There are some boards who say, and again, don't use this application, but just in a general application, we want to say move this garbage can and landscaping here, change this lighting, da, 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 da. Some boards will say, all right, do that and then come back to us and let us see that. Other boards say, that's if they're minor enough, let's just approve it with the conditions because sometimes you don't feel like having applicants come back with their witnesses and their team, sometimes you don't have the room on the agenda. So it's a question of each and every instance, and I think, uh, Mr. Chairman and Paul, you hit on it. A board should never approve an application if they're unsure and they they don't know what they're looking at. And I think that was the topic tonight, so I think it it played out. And I think, Paul, your point is, hey, if some instances are just very, very, very clear that it's going to be an issue, we should try to streamline it and and I get and reveal that issue, identify it earlier. I think that that's a fair point.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion. Paul in favor?
Hi.